Please rise for the Fledge of Legions, followed by invocation by Chaplain Farzad Norian of Florida Memorial Hospital.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Chaplain?
Dear Lord God, as we pause for a moment during this meeting, we ask for a sense of your presence to be with us. Father, we want to thank you for the leaders of the city of Port Orange. We thank you for the hard work that they do, the time they invest to better this city, Lord. Bless them. Bless them in a special, in a unique way. Give them a vision that you have for this community. Guide their thoughts, their actions, that everything they do will inspire lives, will touch lives, in such a way that your name be honored and glorified, for we ask it all in your precious name. Amen.
Call the roll.
Councilman Tremont?
Here.
Councilman Bastian?
Here.
Councilman Stiltner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Burnett?
Here.
Public comments on consent agenda items. There being none. Agenda approval?
I'd like to, can we pull 10?
Pull whatever you like. Pulling 10?
Yeah. And I guess we'll approve the remaining agenda.
We have...
Hold on one second, please, ma'am.
I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda, sans item 10.
I would like, I would like also to discuss seven echo, please. Can we pull that? Some, some things have come to light.
Absolutely. Amen. For, we'll pull seven, seven E?
Yes, please.
All right. So we'll pull seven E and 10.
So, so your motion is to pull seven E and 10 and approve the balance?
Correct.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
We have a second. Call the roll.
Councilman Tremont?
Yes.
Councilman Bastian?
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Five oh. Which brings us to seven echo. Jake?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, seven echoes, the author...
I'm sorry. We missed item six in the motion?
No, I said the remaining.
The remaining included item six.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Better be sure. Sorry, Jake, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, item seven echo, authorization for fiscal year 18 expenditure of Superior Incorporated was on track for consent. Subsequent to that, the Superior ran into a problem with possible data breach in Ormond Beach, so we suspended use of their Click2Gov for online bill pay and auto bill pay. That is still suspended. We have reason to believe that, that Port Orange isn't in the same situation that Ormond is. We have a different version of, of Click2Gov. Ormond's on version one, we're on version three. We believe that the new version three has better protection devices in it, but until we can get verification from Superior that everything is fine, we continue to suspend using them and, and we're trying to educate our citizens on what that means to them in the short term and then what it'll mean in the long term. But I, I suggest that we go ahead and approve FY18 expenditure because right now, we, we don't have another solution and it's either right now them or, or nothing. And right now with the suspension, I think that after we get assurances that version three and, and other things have been taken into consideration and there's no possibility or limited possibility of a data breach, to the best ability of Superior, that we'd like to bring it back up and work under an active contract. As with all contracts, this contract does have a convenience to the government if, if in fact, they can't, if they can't fix it, then...
We can terminate for cost.
Then we'll terminate for cost. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I just, I just didn't want that to be in consent, having the recent development.
So what you're looking for is approval of the expenditure?
Approval as, approval as, as written, now that you understand that this is the same company that we've suspended right now.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments?
No.
We have a motion, a second for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Brings us to item 10. Drew, you pulled it?
Yeah. I, and, and looking at it, I just lost it here, my computer's, I forgot. Looking at it, I, seeing the list of eligible employees, there's not anybody from public safety that was interested or eligible? Or was it not offered for public safety?
I think you're all too new.
Well, we got some old timers there. One of them...
Oh, he doesn't meet the combination of 80.
You want to go?
No, we don't.
Okay. Well, just curious how, I mean, I see that it's 80-plus, but in public safety sectors, that number is really high.
Sure. Our original identification of the potential parameters for somebody being eligible for early retirement offer was the 80 combined years of service and age. We did not have anybody in public service who met that mark. I have been exploring with our outside legal counsel, asking can we set a different set of parameters specifically for public safety? And they said, yes, you can. So that's something that, but depending on budget and things like that, that we'll be looking to move forward as well in the future.
Okay. So it wasn't that they were forgotten. That combination doesn't make it possible, but we could make 60 or, or another number or another...
Sure, if you make it 60 for everybody, you know.
No, or another, some sort of other circumstance where we might perhaps get some interest if there...
Yeah. But at this point, they didn't make that cutoff.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
This is a difficult one to vote on because when I look at the list, a lot of really good people...
Well, those are the eligible. I don't think all of them took it, right? The list that we have is...
Right. At this point, there's nothing finalized. We've just gauged interest, but those were the eligible employees, correct?
Yeah, because I saw that too and I'm like, oh my, if they all leave, but I, I understand that they're probably not all going to leave.
But there are a lot of good people there. We're gonna, you know, but we're gonna save money, so you're twisted between financial savings and the loss of good people. No easy decision there.
Yeah, and I see where it's significant in years two and three. It's...
That's where the money comes up, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, on Bob's, on Bob's note, speaking of good people, in the, in the agreement with the employee, there's a section 3D that basically, if an employee accepts the terms of the early retirement option, they can never seek employment again with the city.
Correct.
I'd like to ask the council to consider making that with the same department. Reason being, as we've seen in past couple of years, we've had a hard time finding some really good employees to fill positions in the city. And if we have folks who have served the city well, have the energy and the drive to continue to work for the city and have a skillset, I'd like to not exclude them from the departments, the human resources department and the city manager and the department heads from, from at least having the consideration. And I think easily you can just change that to within the same department. You could exclude that, obviously.
That is excellent. The other way the county does it is you have to stay out of work a year.
A year.
Which is another option.
And we, and, and I would be, I would be agreeable to after one year and not in the same department, you know, so...
That would work. Jamie, we get, is that possible? Are there any downside to that? Modifying the resolution, under the, the two conditions that they, if they were to return, that they have to be out for at least one year and they could never return to the same department? Is there any downside or do you need to consider that and get back to us?
I, I wouldn't.
I just want to make sure...
No, no, because if there is a downside and it's untenable for me, I, I just won't make the hire. So, so by given the option, I'm fine.
Okay. So we do not have a motion on the floor as of yet. You can make that motion with those changes if you want, Scott.
Make a motion to modify section 3D of the agreement to read after one year of retirement, they would be eligible to reapply for employment with, with the city, but not within the same department that they retire from.
Motioning also to include the, the rest of the resolution as well?
Correct.
Okay. Since we have a motion, a second. Any other comments?
Before we vote on that, if it's okay with council, I'd like to continue to look for options for public safety. To, you know, there's gotta be some way that, that they could be included and, and if we could continue to work that way, that would be, that'd be something.
Mayor? I, I get the whole early retirement piece. I'm, I'm just doing sign language over here with Chief Fuston. We currently have a, a retired fire department firefighter that is working part-time with benef...
No benefits.
Without benefits in the same department. And, and he is doing a great job.
He took a normal retirement, though. It wasn't early.
But, but had he, had he, he would have still been our, our go-to guy as a, as a quartermaster possibly. So the downside...
Do we need a grandfather?
How about, no, no, we don't need a grandfather. Why don't you leave it up to, just put the one-year stipulation and leave it up to management to decide about departments? And I will let you know if that situation exists.
The only reason I was thinking that is because I believe under some of the pension mandates, they can't get back...
Well, you can't reenter the same plan.
Right. But, but I think, maybe it's changed.
We'll, let, let us, give it, give us the latitude for that. Just say one year and, and we'll make sure we don't break any rules in the rehire.
You want to withdraw your motion and remake it?
Certainly.
Okay with you.
Withdraw myself.
So moved.
And moved.
So we're, uh, move, motioning to approve with the contingency that they can return in one year.
They can, they reapply after one.
After one. Okay. You might have some good police officers who come back as reserve officers.
Or Parks and Rec employees.
There you go.
Yeah.
Now is a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. You, you did remove your second to the first motion, right, Drew?
I did.
So the first one was removed completely.
As did I.
We have a motion, we have a second on the floor. Call the roll.
Councilman Tremont?
Yes.
Councilman Bastian?
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Five oh. Assistant participation, Cameron McClellan, waiver of rental fees for Karassi Fields.
I am not really in favor of taking this up at all without someone here to speak to it. And if they show up later, I'll be happy to, if somebody wants to make motion to amend the agenda and hear that later, but council, if they're not here, if, if you're fine with that, we'll dispense with it with, without action?
Yeah, I'm surprised you're not here. You gotta show up. And when, when would the, when is the date for? Do we know what date?
No, I don't right offhand. It's, it's in there, but I'm, I'm not even...
He was meeting with the Parks and Rec board before.
Well, if you find him, we'll bring him back. Assistant participation, non-agenda, Wendell Dallarosa.
I was just curious about my last event from two weeks ago. I was wondering if council had, had time to convene on it or, or make the decision or do anything or...
That was the last time we've met.
Yeah, we have not.
And we haven't had conversation yet tonight.
That's fine. My, my next thing is I sent you something in the recent days of a, of a police report was, was entitledly redacted and I, I obtained a copy of it today. It became available today. And it, it's semi-accurate. It's about 80% accurate. I refuse to be interviewed, but this all transpired because one of my council members told me that there was a car show down at the, the Port Orange City Center here and I came down for it briefly and I interacted with a couple of the officers and just, I like motorcycles, so I had a conversation, which now I realize it was captured on body camera. It was cordial, it was fine, everything was great. And to show my gratitude to policemen, I, I hand out Chick-fil-A cards. They said they didn't want them and I didn't push the issue and I walked on and we talked for about 25 minutes. I went to the other end to leave, where there was a couple other officers there and started talking to them and then there was a radio transmission about, and I just, I'm getting this information today, I don't have the radio transmission yet, I don't have all the information. I got a very, very raw report, but it said, be on the lookout for the, the mentally ill, crazy white guy walking around handing out Chick-fil-A cards. So that gets broadcast out over the police radio and then the policeman that I'm talking to were like, well, where's this crazy guy? Let's look for this crazy guy. And I had to self-identify there that, that yours truly is the crazy Chick-fil-A guy handing out Chick-fil-A. So I just don't think it's a crime to hand out Chick-fil-A cards to policemen to show your appreciate, appreciation for them. I was a uniform policeman. I show my gratitude to them. They got a tough job, especially in today's times. Not a big deal if they don't want to take them, it's no, it's no skin off my butt. I got 500 of them, I just, it's not, not a big deal. Daytona takes them, your other officers take them. But then I, then the sergeant that made the radio call that I had had a 30-minute conversation with, I accidentally ran into Publix. I was on the telephone and I had my Yeti cup in one hand and didn't know he was there, but I saw him and as we went by, I didn't really touch him. I have to see the video, I haven't seen it, so that's why I don't want to say that, you know, I pushed the guy into the, they're saying now, I'm reading and it's unfounded, that I came in brief contact because of my phone touched him or something. I have to, I have to see the video. I'm a video-type person. But then I was, a, a report was done where the sergeant identified him as a police sergeant and where I'm being looked into and investigated for assault and battery of an off-duty police officer. I find it ludicrous. I think the city, the city sent detectives down there to waste it all this time and I'm, and I'm, you know, I want this, this divorce with the city to be over. I don't need it. So I'm, I'm gonna, this is gonna, I'm gonna try, try to talk to Margaret. I'd like to get with Margaret offline too.
Thank you.
And I'll be back at next commission meeting.
We'll be here.
Ted Nofte.
Ted Nofte, Chickadee Drive, Mayor. I'm here tonight to ask at least three of you, preferably four, five of you, but definitely three, to go ahead and change city policy. Let's get rid of civil asset forfeiture here in Port Orange. I'd ask you to do it for two reasons. One, it's unconstitutional. The Fifth Amendment says no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. Fourteenth Amendment, no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process. And then the Florida Constitution itself repeats that same phrase. No person shall be denied their property without due process. Looks to me like that's pretty good pedigree for getting rid of asset forfeiture. Now here's a practical reason for getting rid of it, right here in Port Orange. It cannot be sustained without lies, misdirection, and half-truths. Lies, misdirections, and half-truths. That's what it takes to, to prosecute civil asset forfeiture. And if you have any doubts about that, I would refer you to the, to the Bailey-Traska case that was recently concluded on, on civil asset forfeiture. And actually read it. Read the correspondence between the city and Traska, where they behave, the city that is like used car salesman. The first offer is, we keep the cash, you get your car back. No thanks. How about this? You get your car and your cash, as long as you agree not to sue the city. No thanks. And then what does the city do? In the end, the city does a voluntary stipulation, giving them back the cash and the cars. Now that would have been the end of it, but, but the city objected to the defense attorney's plan to seek additional fees in that case. And there it all comes out. We have the city police under, under oath, giving answers. And we have the assistant city attorney as an officer of the court giving answers. And those answers sustain exactly what I started out with, lies, misdirections, and half-truths. And gentlemen, I don't want my city involved in that, to, to continue on in this process of asset forfeiture. There's no basis for it. The Constitution of both Florida and the United States clearly says, we don't get to lose our property in this country unless we enjoy the benefit of due process of law. So again, we could have this changed in, in DC, never gonna happen. We could have it changed in Tallahassee, never gonna happen. But we could change it right here tonight by you all simply signifying that you no longer want the city involved in asset forfeiture. It's not a clean process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Gardner?
Diane Gardner, 618 Roost Street. I have a question tonight. Had any event situation occur the other day when I was walking on the bridge, was walking down the relief bridge on the Catfish side and there was what I thought was a backpack. It turned out it was a human being. And I kept walking and, you know, I wasn't sure if she was okay, walked down, encountered one of our very nice police officers and I said, I'm concerned about this person, could you check on her? He goes, was she doing anything wrong? I said, absolutely not, I'm just concerned. He said, there is new case law. He said that will be impacting on how we work with the, with homeless. I think the case law, and I tried to reach Robin, of course she's at conference, but I think the case law in question is Reed versus the town of Gilbert. And like I said, I could be completely wrong, but I, you know, just doing some work on the internet, but I wondered what that meant for us as a city. I see in Daytona, as I'm driving through there, there appear to be more folks who I perceive to be homeless, holding signs, like literally on all four corners, Mason Avenue, Volusia. And I want to see every constitutional right I have extended to anyone, everyone. I'm a supporter of the Constitution. But I just wondered, you know, we have a new park. I wondered how that would be manifest. I didn't know if maybe the manager could speak to that or maybe Chief Ramaldi or maybe former Chief Ford. That's my question, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, please. James Young? For Sticks.
Good evening, Council. Dr. James Young, Port Orange chiropractor. And I come to you as a business owner in Port Orange, have been for the past 10 years. I'm going to change the course a little bit and I'm actually going to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to each and every council member, to our city manager, for what I consider is doing an excellent job. I think you all work very tirelessly. Mr. Johansson has the amazing job of saying, we need a $100 gift card and then people tell him, okay, as long as you can buy it for 50. And I think it comes to that because many people are forgetting that when you want an exceptional city, and I consider Port Orange an exceptional city, you need to invest in that city. So take for the stormwater, for instance, bringing it from, let's say 30 to 15, the cost of three Starbucks, people aren't seeing the impact that happens later on down the line. They aren't seeing that years down the line, as property values decrease because we couldn't get the extra 15, that your taxes are going to go up anyway because you can't make any tax off the person whose home value is worth nothing. For, as far as those who, as far as for the civil forfeiture, if any of you need to decide that you need to use an extra couple feet of my, my business property, you go ahead and do that. I'll park a little further up and it won't harm me a bit. To all the uniform officers and service people, I'm going to thank you by saying thank you. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doctor.
Counsel, any objections going back to item C? Are we bringing up Cameron McClellan right now?
He's here. Nice haircut, Coach.
Thank you. Something that means so much to me and then I show up late. How about that? I thought it was seven, I apologize, but thanks again for making room for me. Approaching you all in hopes of waiving a few fees for the Seventh Annual Battle at the Beach Tournament that we have out at Karassi. Fees being the temporary fence setup concession. These have been waived in the past. I understand it's 2017, so now it's the present, but nonetheless, I was hoping that those monies could go back to the girls that fundraised them in hopes for making our program even better than it is and to go back on what, what this city is built on, its, its volunteerism and giving back. Asked my girls today, how many of you played at Port Orange Rec? Probably 80% of the hands went up. Asked how many of you helped out with the clinic last year or were a part of the clinic last year? 80% of the hands went up. These girls do Special Olympics, they give back to the community and all I'm asking in return is to waive a few fees or let us set up the fence. It's money back in their pocket and that's essentially why I'm here today.
Jake?
Yes, sir. We had this conversation during the budget discussions. I, I understand that, that council's got a tough decision to make, but, but I stand fast that, that the, the budget currently can't absorb it. Somehow something will come up and will be, as others have said, $700 in the green at the end of the year. Why couldn't we do that? But, but we did not budget for this. So you take $700 here, you're not going to ask me where it's going to come from, I'm going to take it from somewhere and, and you're not going to be too happy about where I take it, at least one or two of you. So it, it is what it is. We, we do not budget for these waivers. I had a contra fund set up for, for council to make donations, if you will, like this, but we had to cut it during that last budget cut, so that's no longer available. So I, I do not have the budget for it right now.
Bob?
I think, you know, penny wise, dollar foolish, anytime I think we make an investment in the community, especially something this positive, it's good for us, it's good for the community. We have a close to $40 million budget. You know, I would suggest, I'll even identify places to find it. For example, we tend to over, un, over, under-budget our, our turnover, we call it turnover count. We could easily take some $700 from that. We could easily take $700 from that. So, and then at the end of the year, we won't have a million five left over, or a million left over. We'll only have 997,000, you know, 998.
Ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, Mayor, that that money does roll to fund balance. Your savings account, it's dwindling. So the more money you use out of your
Hurricane by hurricane.
Extra money that doesn't go into savings, you're basically using fund balance to fund waivers. If we're going to do it every year, then it doesn't become a one-time waiver. It becomes an expense. And your current fiscal guidance is to not use fund balance for reoccurring costs, and this has become a reoccurring cost. I can, we can do a budget appropriation and take it from fund balance, but I do not think that's a good idea.
Jake, would, Jake?
Yes, sir.
Would this, at the, would it have been funded at the 4-5-6 rate that was proposed, or was it the original 4-7-3 whatever?
We dropped the contra fund on the last, the last cut at $222,000.
So we would have been okay at 4-5-6, but not the 4-4-8?
That's correct.
Okay. And still, no word on reimbursement or anything from FEMA or any of that? And we have our bills issued.
Your sense of humor is in place.
No.
Wow, okay.
Chase?
Well, you know, I've pledged that I was going to take a harder line on these waivers as well, after going through my first budget process at the same time. You know, question is, you know, the benefit that it gives back to the community. How many teams do we have coming from out of town, Coach?
Right now, there's 12, and this is a nationally sanctioned tournament. We have a team from Alabama, have had a team from Texas in the past.
And we got, are hotels in the area going to be filled up with that?
The Country Inn and Suites is our host hotel.
You know, and tell me again about the clinics that you guys offer.
Last year, we didn't come before you. We, in kind services, did a clinic, three nights, two hours each, with my girls, for our city girls, the rec leagues, to give back. We did hitting and bunting. We did fielding and throwing, and we did pitching and catching. And we gave back that way. Our girls do numerous hours of Special Olympics with softball. We volunteer different events around the area. We do benefit games. We had the rec league night at the high school, brought them onto the field for the national anthem. Any chance we get, we give back. That's what it's all about.
Well, see, those are things that, you know, I'm going to be taking into consideration. I know just recently, we waived a fee to use the Lakeside Center for a WNBA signing, I believe.
A draft night, actually.
And the trade-off was, we all approved it, was that
In-kind.
The in-kind contribution to the community.
It has a
The residual benefits from it. So that, you know, when you come to the table with stuff like that, it makes it a little easier for me to look at. At the same time, would you like to know that question, Jake? How much, well, here's my question. I'll let you ask that one. Are you already paying fees to rent the facility now?
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we're
Just short of $2,500 bucks.
Short of $2,500, and like I said, that's $2,500 that my girls raise by going out and earning money for the program.
Scott?
Well, I just
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
You're not done?
That's all the questions, but just for the record, on advice from council, I'll recuse myself from the vote, just to maintain consistency with not voting on direct things at my employment.
Certain job that
I do.
There you go.
Scott?
Coach, are there, is there any possibility of any inadvertent whistles during these tournaments?
I coach football as well, and
Sorry.
Done with that guy. You need to pick me up right after that one.
The fence fee, I thought you guys were setting the fences up.
We offered to.
Okay.
And two years ago, I believe, maybe three now, I'm not quite sure, we were told that they'd waive it, however, the city crew would take care of it, so.
Okay. Is there a reason why they can't set the fences up for their own tournament?
Susan's not here, but I would imagine liability would be an issue. But I don't know if that's true, because we have, we have the weightlifting team do the fence for family days on public property, but I don't
It's not like they're not already going to be on the fields.
Yeah.
And then the other question is, is with the, the other part of the fee deals with concession. If they don't use the concession, what happens to the concession? It just sits there locked up?
Somebody else is available to use it, from what I understand.
But aren't you guys using all four fields?
Yes.
So someone else would be available to use the concession in the middle of all four fields?
I guess so.
Okay. I don't, I don't see that being realistic of happening, but I will just say that the last, I believe the last two years, but at least twice in the last three, I've been out to see this tournament firsthand, and it is definitely a quality event, and it is absolutely the kind of event we want to keep in our city and be a part of. There's no question about that. And I do appreciate, Coach, I will say that a lot of coaches have stood before us and said that throughout the year, they're going to give back to the community, and them and their players are going to do one thing or another. And time to time, they fall short of that. But I don't, I couldn't say that about your program and your, and your players and the stuff that I know that you and your family do for the community, and so I'm very appreciative for all of those things that I know you do, and never expecting the accolades, but I think this is a small amount to invest into what's already been paid forward, no question.
I think that there's certainly some give and take here, too. I think that we can discuss, counsel, whatever our pleasure is, I think the fence is something that we can discuss, letting them set up or with our help, or whatever the case may be. But even if we, if we didn't waive a concession fee and they decided not to use the concession, they could still do a concession, set up tables and bringing things in. And the lack of convenience that goes along with that, to me, it's like, we might as well let them use the concession stand in return for some kind of in-kind service, like oh, say, in the clinic. I like that idea a lot. But counsel, what's your pleasure?
May I have two?
You have two follow-ups?
Sure. I still have a Are we charging at the gate? Are you charging at the gate for people to come in and watch? Like, I pay to watch my son play every weekend.
I do not. The officials are paid by the athletic director, and if he charges, he charges, but that has nothing to do with me. The officials do cost four grand for that tournament.
But if I want to go watch the tournament, it'll be free to me, for me to watch.
As far as I understand, the ECHA grant doesn't allow charging.
Okay. And are the teams being charged to play?
They are.
And how much is that?
That's $300 per team.
And 12 teams, 300 bucks.
15 other teams, 45.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
Well, I still have a comment. Coach, I've been to your games last year. You had a playoff run. You had a pretty darn good pitcher. She's now moved on to college, and hopefully she's doing well. I've been there. And I would love to say yes to this, and we could have at a higher mileage rate. And so, kind of looking forward, when we make a decision up here, sometimes you don't see all the things that will be bound by that decision. You know, we don't budget for this kind of thing, and it's tough. I'd love to be able to do it, and I wish I could say yes, and again, we could have at a little bit of a higher mileage rate, but this one's, this one's tough because we, you know, we had to make some pretty significant cuts, and it affects some of these things. But I personally would come out and help you set up the fence or do something to help you from that side. If you need some help, call me. I'd be willing to help you.
I make a motion to approve the waiver.
Second.
Question, is there, Jake, help me out.
Yep.
I'm sure I know the answer to this.
Yes, sir.
Would the Parks and Rec Scholarship Fund be available for something to cover these costs?
The scholarship fund is used to pay for recreation and kids involved in their
Our sports team.
This is now our sports team.
It's an interesting thought, but yeah, we got to keep it.
I thought so. We're going to put it out there.
We have a motion. Do we get a second?
Yes, got a second.
We had a motion. We had a second. Any other comments?
We're voting to approve.
We're voting to approve. We have a motion for approval of the waiver. Call the roll.
Councilperson?
No.
Councilman Stiltner?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
The substitute teacher down there got all the names right. And of course, Chase abstaining. It's all, it all comes down to right here. I'm going to vote yes, but certainly with some stipulations. The point that Drew made was a terrific one. We've done this to ourselves every time this comes up for the rest of the year. But also, certainly, I need you to help us again, because you put on a terrific clinic this year, and your girls, from what I understand, terrific attitude, particularly with the younger kids, and we love that. So we want to have that interaction, and if there's anything that we can do to work with the fence, I would appreciate it.
Coach, you have one of your star players in the crowd with us?
Maya Hannah Berry, who didn't have a 14U game to volunteer, Coach. She made it over here because of the weather. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Coach, I'll still help you.
And Coach, thanks a million for all you do.
Thanks, guys. See you. One more thing. We have two Special Olympians here in Port Orange that will be going to Seattle for the National Games next June and July.
Excellent. Very cool.
So one's a stand-up paddleboarder, one's going to be a golfer. So
Nice. That's exciting.
My compliments again to yourself and your wife for the program that you guys run at Spruce Creek with our special needs kids. My family is, will be a major benefactor to that.
Coach, if you can work that out, I'd like to see you bring them in front of council before that trip.
Absolutely.
Give us an opportunity to wish them well and try to give them some rewards.
You're welcome to throw out the first
I think that's awesome. That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching.
Mayor, I think you have a member of the audience that has a question.
Do we do comments on citizen comments? This is, that was Okay.
Ted Nofte, Chickadee Drive. It's very important, Mr. Mayor, that every single time this council votes, you afford the public the opportunity to comment. It's the law, and you most definitely did it the last time we were in this chamber, right after Delarosa's vote. You opened it up to public comments, so the answer is yes. And I'm pleased with the vote you just made, but the point I wanted to make is in consent, number 7C, I believe, was a $7,000
This is not this issue that we're not talking about the
$7,000
Thank you, Mr. Nofte. If you want to talk about this item that you came up here.
It wasn't even worth discussing. Mr. Mayor, it applies exactly to what you just did there.
You had to talk about the items on consent, and you did not speak to that.
I'm referencing, now in reference to this one, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for abiding by the law. With the encouragement of your attorney. Listen.
Thank you, Mr. Nofte. Council comments. Chase?
Yeah, Mayor, just one comment. I just want to make a brief statement here. Last week, KKK flyers are distributed within the city of Port Orange. I'm not protesting their constitutional right to do so. I'm simply expressing my constitutional right and my duty as a leader in this community to publicly speak out against this hate-filled ideology that's having no place within this great community. I initially was not going to reference this incident tonight, but I'll be honest, every night when I put my boy, when I put my boy to sleep, it continued to build up and frankly become more and more personal to me. My father was on the front lines of the civil rights movement here in Volusia County in the 1960s. He personally, along with the late Mayor Bud Asher, integrated Father Lopez High School in 1966, paying for the tuition of their first African-American student, one Mr. Marvin Benford. I also recount the story of when my father came home from work one day, only to find all of his belongings in the parking lot, and the locks changed to his apartment. The reason? He fed and tutored a group of African-American students every day after school. The landlord told my dad that if those colored kids are back tomorrow, then the locks will be changed. Pains me to see that this ignorant ideology still has its hold on some people, but as a student and teacher of history, I cannot be surprised by it. KKK has had their prominent times in history in three different eras, are founded in the late 1860s, a reawakening of the group in the 1920s, and again, a reemergence after World War II, having their peak in the 1960s. Today, around the country, we're beginning to see a light resurgence of this ideology, looking for acceptance in this generation. On behalf of the hundreds of Port Orange residents that I heard from and spoke with regarding this matter, our response is simply this, that it is not accepted within this great community. Our city started out on the right side of history, being founded by abolitionist John Milton Hawkes as a colony for newly freed slaves, hence the name Freemanville. And from our city's very first steps, we've been on the right side of history, and by golly, we will not veer now. We're going to celebrate our 150th anniversary of our city by continuing the tradition of our founding principle and our, of our city and our county, or, excuse me, our country, that all men are created equal, and thus will be treated accordingly.
Amen. That's my statement. Amen.
I could not agree more, and I said this, and I'll say it again, that did not reflect the values of this community in any way, shape, or form. It's not welcome here. But, and that's pretty much the last, I won't even talk about it because I don't even want to give them credence.
Amen.
Anything else, Chase?
That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Read with interest a recent article in the News Journal, and it was about growth coming to Port Orange, which is no surprise, given what's happening in Daytona, given what's happening with development. But what it does do is make us aware as a council that growth brings its problems, as you well know. And one problem you can see easily from where the growth is now clustering, I'm talking about commercial development in particular, is along the remnants, what's left open on the Dunlauton Corridor and along Williamson. I would like to, counsel, to set up a workshop, and that workshop would address traffic matters along the Williamson and the Dunlauton Corridor, with a particular eye on developing policies and directions for our community development people and for our staff, that we can manage this growth, not to stop the growth, but to make it consistent with reasonable traffic patterns along the Dunlauton Corridor. Integrated into that discussion, I would also like, and I've talked to Jake, Jake has a whole series, and staff has been working on it. We have a whole series of potential things. We put some of them in front of TPO and the like, to further help traffic in the Dunlauton and soon-to-be clogged Williamson Corridor. So I think I would like to see, as part of it as well, discussion on remedial actions we as a city can take in the short run and the long run for addressing it, and as well as giving guidelines to staff on what we're going to require of people that are building in that area, to see if we can at least minimize the impacts of further traffic in that area.
And we've got a lot of things in the works, too. It could not hurt to be able to recap all of those at one time. And I know what you've just asked for is substantial. There's no way that you can do that workshop in short order.
No.
If it takes a while to put something like that together, then that's fine, because I want to be thorough with it.
Yeah, I think the near term, obviously, you all are well aware of the near-term traffic things we have proposed, and some of the public that goes to the city managers and HOA meetings that we discuss it. But what we haven't discussed is a, is a change or an amendment or a restriction in the land development code that would restrict what is already allowed on the corridor. So if that's the conversation, that's going to take some time, and, you know, we can just change it, but I know you don't want to do that without due diligence, so we need to do some study and determine that, but
That takes you three or even four hours That takes you three or even four hours.
Right. Yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
Easy day.
We also need to talk, engage in this conversation to make it a little more complex, the county and the state.
Yeah. That's the complex part.
Yeah, because they, they are, Dunlaughton is a state road, and Williamson's a county road. And while they're key to our community, they're a large part of the control is outside of our specific purview. So we need to have them involved in it. And particularly when it comes to Williamson, we really need to start planning, fore-laning increasing parts of Williamson to the north.
Yes.
Because that's already, as anyone that drives it regularly knows, it's already becoming, beginning to back up.
Yeah.
Start with the bridge, please. Yeah. It's gotta be the first thing, not the last thing.
That bridge is a challenge to navigate as it is.
Yes.
You've got speed limit, what, 45, 50 through there, and you get to the top of it before you see what's in front of you, and it's stopped right there.
Mayor, if I can comment on Bob's comment there, I think that would be a very worthwhile workshop, but I would propose that you start that with a legal discussion about landowner rights and their current zoning and codes. Because the last thing I wanna do is get the city in a whole series of incredibly expensive civil litigations, trying to take current landowner rights that they're gonna see at very high value away or restricting them. We've seen those fights. They don't end well. They usually end very, very expensively for the municipality, and the landowners prevail, and we end up, we meaning municipalities, end up paying the landowners, and they still build those projects.
Right.
So, that's been a unique challenge with a lot of the discussions I think we've had over the last few years with some of the projects that have come before us and the process that they, that they need to go through, where there's this feeling of, well, the council just should say no. That's not realistic. That's not really an option in most of those cases with regard to the landowners' rights and their rights to build on property that has a certain zoning, and if they're operating within those boundaries. And so I just would suggest that, I think that workshop would be a great idea, Bob. We really do need to have that. I think what I would look forward to first and foremost in the front end of that is better understanding.
Sprinkle it with a dose of reality.
Yep. Let's understand what we really can and can't do so that we keep ourselves out of civil litigations that we don't wanna be involved in, and let's learn how to also have that discussion with our constituents when they, when they bring those things to us. Because I think there's a lot of good information there that we just need to refresh ourselves with and be brought up to speed. What are other cities? We're not the only, we're not the only city in the state of Florida. I seem to remember the governor, when we were up in Tallahassee, throwing out a number that there's about 8,000 people a week moving to the state of Florida. And a certain percentage, more than half, wanna live within four miles of the coastline, whether it be east coast, west coast, doesn't matter. So we're in those coastal communities that are being highly sought after all over the state of Florida, so.
We're not the only city in our area, much less the state of Florida.
So I would just say that as part of that workshop, in the forefront of that, we should have the legal discussion of those things.
Excellent suggestion. We're not talking about shutting down development. We're talking about channeling it into positive directions.
Yes. But I, like you, Bob, I wanna know what realistically are all of our options?
Yes.
And how would those things play out if they were challenged legally? I wanna know where we would, where we think we would stand.
Margaret is taking notes feverishly.
She's gonna do notes.
Did you ask something in Berlin?
Yeah, just wanted to comment. Great idea, Bob, and kudos, Scott. That's a great point to make. I'll tell you, since I've been sitting up on this dais, one of the most common questions I get from people is, why are you letting them build that there? Why are you letting them put that there? And they don't, you know, talk, they don't understand.
Your hands have been tied years ago.
Can't tell people what to do with their private property. We can have standards and whatnot, but something's written in the law, we can't change. So we, I wanna be able to do a better job in educating people with that. So I'd love that item on there and to be educated further with that, to better communicate to the residents.
Bob, do you have anything else?
No.
Drew?
Yeah, I just got two things. First one is, I mean, I drive Dunlaughton on a regular basis, I agree, traffic's crazy at times, but that's all it is about. The, our Dorothy Hugel annex, drove by tonight, it looks like there's still some, I don't know, maybe they made a first pass, but it looks like there's still some storm debris over there in the parking lot, a lot of leaves, piles of leaves and things over there, so I don't know if that, if.
After a second, so Public Works did first and second pass cleaned it up, but some other stuff is blown out of the trees.
Okay, so we're gonna address it?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
After all is said and done, we'll get a good street sweep in the city center.
Okay, just, yeah, 'cause that area looks.
It looked, it looked great for family days, and then it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it looked like it had been cleaned up, but now it looked, there is a lot of, the dead leaves, so, and there's not much grass over there because there's so much shade.
Right.
But, second part of this, if it's okay, we had a report two weeks ago, there was an accident, and the car ended up hitting a pedestrian on the sidewalk, and there was an extended response time, and I don't know if the chief.
Extended? We were there, we were on scene immediately.
Our, our guy, let me rephrase that. There was an extended transport time, not response, transport time.
Thank you.
And if Chief has some additional information, because I think he got out of here before we could really ask questions or anything, so if you don't mind, or if you have anything further, I'd like to hear the results of how that's being addressed.
The extended transport.
It was a dispatch.
Yeah.
The extended transport time, not response.
That was evac.
That was my, that was my error, or my fault, so.
Got it.
Chief, you got anything more for us?
Ken Fussell, Fire Chief, yeah, a little bit. I met the day after with the Volusia County 911 Center, and they owned their part of the missteps that occurred that night. We finally were able to meet just yesterday with Volusia County EMS. Chief Wolf and I had an extended meeting with them just yesterday.
Okay.
And there were some interesting outtakes from that, from that whole, from that whole incident. And I want to try to help you understand one thing, that a witnessed accident is not the typical way we respond to an emergency.
Correct.
We're usually either at training in the fire station or somewhere other than the scene of the accident.
Being witnessed by your staff.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. So we were, we were literally there at the scene of the accident when the accident occurred. When that accident was called in by our line lieutenant, she requested the resources she needed, based on her size up.
Yeah.
The size up gave every indication, multiple times, that an ambulance could have been and should have been sent.
Correct.
And it wasn't. So all the parties involved met on this yesterday. I respectfully disagree with some of what Volusia County EMS, their position. I felt that the dispatcher was given information from their system status dispatcher that was at best disingenuous. When I requested an ambulance, when I, when I injected myself into the, into the radio traffic after Battalion Chief Mieski requested closer resources, I felt the answer was at best disingenuous.
Okay.
And that's kind of where we all agreed to disagree. I look for some improvements to come out of this, this very accident. I think they're gonna address the responsibilities of the system status dispatcher, who is an employee of Volusia County EMS.
Yeah.
But sits in the 911 Center, but doesn't talk on the radio.
Okay.
So any information that comes from that system status dispatcher is given to a tack channel operator and then relayed to the field units. There's many, many, many opportunities for mistakes and missteps to occur. So I think just, just this one incident highlighted a lot of those opportunities for mistakes. But I will tell you this, I'm, with no disrespect, we have no dog in this fight. We don't have a plus unit in our fire stations.
Correct.
And we get what we get because we're one of the only fire departments without a plus unit. So we are at the mercy of Volusia County EMS when it comes to transport.
I understand.
And it's at some.
Particularly when they try to dispatch a unit after all that amount of time and not, from Deland.
Actually from west of Deland.
And I think that was the part that really blew my mind, and certainly as taxpayers who are paying for a 911 system at the county level and paying for evac at the county level with our taxes, that troubles me. It makes, makes me wonder, since they took over evac, it's, I've been informed, I don't know how true it is, that we have basically the same number of units on the road as we did when they took it over.
Less.
And that troubles me because we've got more people moving to Volusia County every day.
On any given day, we typically see 15, 16, 18 ambulances on the street for a county of 540,000. I came from a county of 180,000. We had 15 on the street every day. Our ambulance, our ambulances in this county are task saturated. We don't have enough for the populace that we serve.
Correct. We've got a lot of retirees that count on it.
Chief, how long was it from when Lieutenant Fitch had reported it until the patient was in and was transported?
The ambulance from South Daytona, after being requested.
Okay.
Was on scene 39 minutes after the witnessed accident.
And that was after you had, you became involved and then they finally sent you somebody who was closer because you'd still be waiting for the one from Deland.
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
You and I would probably agree on that.
Yeah. You know, it, that type of, when there's a report of an MVA, and it's a vehicle versus pedestrian, common sense is gonna say, an ambulance is needed. And you send them, and if they're not needed, you turn them away.
I couldn't disagree more, but, but I will tell you this, Council.
You couldn't agree more, right?
I could not agree more.
Okay.
The 911 Center owned up to their mistake.
Okay.
There was multiple opportunities when they should have either prompted the incident commander.
Yeah.
Or offered to send an ambulance. And 16 minutes into the incident was when our lieutenant asked, asked what the estimated time of arrival was gonna be for that ambulance. They said none had been sent.
Wow.
But when she reports a two-vehicle MVA with airbag deployment, a civilian, a bicyclist down.
Yeah.
There's multiple chances where an ambulance could have been sent, and should have been sent and was not.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Chief, I don't, I don't want, sorry.
Yeah, I'm finished, but you, yeah, go ahead.
I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot tonight, since Councilman Bashen's already done that to you. Appreciate that.
I wanted to hear more.
And one thing I do know about first response is, man, we can what-if the stuff to death and all the hypotheticals, and, but my concern is, is how do we do an ongoing evaluation of these types of things so that we know are, are our residents in Port Orange getting what, their fair share of the coverage, so to speak? And I'm gonna point something out. So the other day, I'm down in Oak Hill, and by the way, this incident that you're talking about is very important to me, and this is what made me think of it. So I'm down in Oak Hill the other day, and I'm coming back from a meeting, and I see an Edgewater fire truck heading south on US 1, right out of their city limits. Two, three minutes behind that, here comes a new Smyrna fire truck, and another new Smyrna fire truck, followed by a series of police cars and two ambulances. And so what I don't understand is, I understand the closest response and the closest unit, and I understand how the plus one is supposed to work, but how does the process work where all that coverage is shifting? So is whatever that incident is that's going on in the south end of the county, how do we, in Port Orange, evaluate as that coverage shifts around the southeast part of Volusia County? Am I asking that?
Yeah. Actually, I do.
How do we evaluate that on an ongoing basis?
For fire resources, we leave that to our battalion chief. In the absence of the battalion chief, if the battalion chief is involved in the incident, we leave it to the next hire in command, which usually is Chief Wolfing, or myself. We rotate the companies around based on the need. For ambulances, it's done by the system status dispatcher, who works for Volusia County ambulance that sits in the 911 Center, but is not an employee of the 911 Center. It's a very unique arrangement, and I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Say, I apologize to you. Say that one more time, so I understand.
Okay. For fire resources.
Right.
In Port Orange, if the Port Orange battalion chief is not involved in the incident.
Okay.
It is up to his or her discretion to move resources around our city based on what he perceives as the need. We call a relocation matrix.
But that doesn't include ambulances?
No.
Just fire resources?
Fire resources only.
Okay.
All right. If it's an ambulance issue, it's the system status dispatcher, who works for Volusia County EMS.
Okay.
That sits at the 911 Center, that tells the 911 unit operators which ambulances are available. It's, it's a, it's a very complex and fluid operation.
So that systems person is the one that would move the ambulance resources around in a staging-type mode?
Their ambulances, only the Volusia County ambulances.
But not the plus ones?
And what we found out through this, what I would call an inquiry, investigation, is the system status dispatcher who was working that night did not show the ambulances on their screen, the plus ambulances. They had that filter turned off. And that's, and that's what I've been told is fairly typical.
Okay.
They monitor their locations and their availability, but any plus ambulances, they don't monitor.
Because going back to where you were talking about a minute ago, we don't have a dog in the fight. If we had a plus-one program, could that plus-one have been obligated in Deland when that particular incident happened?
The plus, the plus system is designed that you are essentially locked into your jurisdiction, unless there's a call similar to the one that we had the other night, that a fire chief or an incident commander has the, has the authority to special-call a designated resource. If there's no Volusia County ambulances available, it is within the authority of the incident commander, of the authority having jurisdiction, to special-call that resource that they need. Now, some company officers are a little bit slow to do that. They think they're gonna get in trouble. And I think that's a little bit of a throwback to previous administrations, to a previous punitive administration. We don't operate like that. So I'm trying to empower our people. If you see the need, call for the need. Justify the need, call for the need, make it happen. Unfortunately, we just, we don't have a dog in the fight. We're not on the same playing field as Volusia County EMS because we don't have an ambulance in our fire stations.
Well, and when you say we don't have a dog in the fight, we don't have one yet. That being said, I wanna continue having these discussions and learning more about this process, because my recollection, when we first started having these discussions last year, was that one of our fears was, if we have a plus-one, our ambulance that's supposed to be in Port Orange could be getting sent all over the county. But I hear you saying that that's not exactly.
It is not true.
That is not how plus works.
Because I heard they could be.
That is not how plus works, sir.
It's not working that anymore that way.
The plus agreement is, is very favorable to Volusia County EMS and their ambulances. They will utilize all of theirs first, and then if there's a need in Port Orange, and Port Orange has a plus ambulance, then they would utilize the Port Orange ambulance. However.
Outside of Port Orange?
Yeah. No, in Port Orange. They would not send a Port Orange ambulance outside of Port Orange.
They can't send them, so we, and we wouldn't send them outside.
That's correct. Unless it would, the potential for a special call from an incident commander or another authority having jurisdiction probably might be South Daytona, could be the shores, could be ponds. If they're task saturated and can't get to their need, they could special request ours.
One of the issues-
Which is what we did with South Daytona.
Which is exactly what I did with South Daytona.
We helped our direct neighbors.
Yeah. One of the issues is clearly, Port Orange needs its own ambulances, and I've always argued that. The problem is, under the current county rules, it becomes a tremendously unfair proposition for Port Orange because the plus system isn't a very fair way of doing it. I mean, what we should be arguing for is full ambulance service that Port Orange has a dog in the fight, a real dog in the fight, and its ambulances are used to transport our people first available.
I would love to get there, sir. I think that this incident will bring about some conversation between all the parties involved, that we're going to see some changes to the plus program.
Will you just give me the, go ahead, and I will go talk to the county legislators? Because I think for a long time, you know, this has been coming. I understand the county situation. Evac is phenomenally expensive, and I think the citizens here should realize that, you know, the ambulances will come at a considerable cost. But at least if we have a program that's fair here, we can mitigate some of the costs by reimbursements for the ambulance services. You know, it probably will not cover the full cost, but it will certainly cover a reasonable proportion. But the problem right now with the county is, we would not, we would end up transporting at a very non-advantage position for ourselves. The plus, as a county official said, the plus program is designed only to assist the county, not to assist you. That's what I was told.
So Chief, moving forward then, my, my question, and I'm, I'll let you go, is, so how do we continue to evaluate this moving forward so that we can see if the changes improve, they don't improve, they get worse? Because I, that, that's, that's really important to me because one of the arguments that I've heard in the past is, it's very difficult to evaluate this because all the information isn't really there and given to us in the formats we would like to see it.
In my mind, I'm trying to formulate an answer.
Okay. And you know what? I'll do this. In fairness, how about this?
We're playing-
I'm holding you for an answer tonight.
We're playing on their ball field-
Right.
-with their bat, with their ball, with their ball gloves and their batting helmet.
Good analogy.
That's correct.
Well, I'm looking for suggestions on the evaluation portion of it. I know that's difficult.
We did provide you a, a, what we considered a solid implementation program, and if you're interested in revisiting that, we, we believe that there's, we believe that our estimates were conservative. We believe that our, our implementation plan was well thought out and achievable, and we thought that that was a good step to get us at least into the same ballpark.
Let's also take into account that some of the plus-one programs in the area are still fairly new, and we can learn from other people's mistakes if we're patients, or from their successes. And certainly, New Smyrna hasn't had theirs for a very long time yet. But I'd be very interested to see after a, a, a specific period of time, how they're doing with collections, how they're doing with calls. There's a whole bunch of operational things that we can look at, as well as the financial side of that. Because the bottom line is, I think we all agree, hey, another, an ambulance in our city dedicated, plus-one, sounds like a great idea. Bottom line is, the reason why we don't have it right now is, how do you pay for it? And there's not enough data yet. We need to figure that part out. We're not there yet.
I, I would encourage this council, let's continue having this discussion. I, I still think that it's very important for us to realize the, how important it is to get our residents from the hands of our paramedics on the street into the hands of the folks at Halifax ER as quickly as possible. That's got to be the goal.
Halifax ER here at Dunlop, or?
Either. They got to go, but I'll leave that to them, but nonetheless-
We have a hospital in our city that's underutilized.
Citying out there at the intersection for forty-plus, forty minutes, that's insane.
Absolutely.
It was an anomaly, but it, it, I mean, we had, we had Engine 71 respond to an emergency call this morning. No ambulances were available. It happens all the time. It, it happens nearly every day. They're task saturated. No, it's no reflection on employees of Volusia County EMS, none.
I understand.
They're just, they're just task saturated.
They're doing the best they can with what they're given-
They're doing the best they can, exactly.
What they have.
Exactly.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Drew, do you have anything else?
No.
Scott?
I think I said enough.
Really, Dan?
I really had just one thing. A couple of weeks ago, we heard from Mr. Dolorosa, Counsel. We've had a couple of weeks to reflect on that, research and do whatever. And I would ask you at this time, is there any action that you care to take?
Mayor, I, I would just comment that I have had several residents who watched that meeting, who did not see the same concerns that Mr. Dolorosa had voiced to the council. Leave it for you at that.
Anything you have?
I said it that night. I, I didn't see anything in that video from anybody that was outrageous or outlandish or, or cause for concern. From me, for, from me, I don't think, this is me personally, on a safety issue, I don't think there is an overreaction. I mean, just plain and simple, I don't think you can overreact on a safety-related issue. That's my opinion.
Bob?
The behavior, I think everyone will agree, Mr. Dolorosa included, was not so egregious as to demand any action. I think simply, we had an open discussion of it, and I think that's sufficient.
Chase?
Okay.
Okay. Unless you guys take further action, I'll consider the, the matter settled for now then.
Does the public quickly address that?
No. This is just council comments. You can get me next week, or two weeks from now.
When you have an open item like this, you don't need to discuss it?
It's not an agenda item.
So should we shut it down now because I'm leaving, or because I'm getting up? Should we shut City Hall down because I'm getting up?
Special reports of proclamations, item fifteen, Florida City Government Week 2017 proclamation.
I'm going to get up and leave council right now, so I don't know if we need to shut City Hall down or not. I think we might want to consider it. I don't know. I guess I'm a big threat. Am I? I don't know. Should we shut it down?
Let's take a five-minute recess. Give you a chance to clear out.
No, I'll, I'll wait for five minutes. If you can't address City Hall, I don't, I don't understand that.
Item fifteen is a Florida City Government Week 2017 proclamation, which we're going to read now into the record. Proclamation, "Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials, employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas Florida City Government Week," somebody misspelled Florida, forgot the A. Get Robin back. "Whereas Florida City Government Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives, and whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all the citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people, and whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities, of which we are included, have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And our city wants to also use this week to emphasize the importance of volunteering and giving back because volunteering strengthens communities, solves problems and improves lives, and the final whereas, Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement and positively impact lives by volunteering. Now therefore, I, Donald O'Burnett, Mayor of the City of Port Orange, Florida, do hereby recognize the week of October twenty-three through October twenty-nine, two seventeen, twenty seventeen, as Florida City Government Week. With my signature and the seal of the city, I declare it in this day and in this place." Y'all clap now. With that, Christine, could you come up for just a second? See, you strayed too close to the microphone. One of the things that I wanted everybody to know a little bit about is something that we're doing, an inaugural year project, is Port Orange University. And if you could do me a favor and take forty-five seconds and, and tell our audience exactly what that is.
Sure. Well, this year, we started our first Citizens Academy as a whole at the City of Port Orange, called Port Orange University. We started it September eighteenth. It'll be, it's a nine-week. Each week, we are going through a series of different departments. We have twenty-nine lovely individuals, citizens of Port Orange, who are taking part. Each week is something a little bit different. We started with Government 101, went through to Parks and Recreation, Community Development, Fire and Rescue. So each week, the citizens get a chance to learn about our government, how our city works, and their services that we provide. So we're very excited. It's, it's going great. We've had a lot of great positive reviews and looking forward to, to celebrating Florida City Government Week next week with Public Utilities. And so everyone's very excited, and we got T-shirts for everybody. Bob, I'm glad you're wearing yours. Very, very excited. So it's, it's a great, it's a great program.
There is no doubt, engaged citizenry and informed citizenry is a good citizenry, and, and it helps enhance the committee, community, and I appreciate your efforts in Port Orange University.
Yeah, I've loved it. I loved it from day one, so I'm glad I'm, I'm a part of that. So, thank you, Jake.
Ms. Mayor, I, I really would like an opportunity for council to meet with the group to kind of be the, you know, put it all together. Because, you know, I'm sure they're hearing a lot of things and they're saying, well, how does one decide whether to do this or that? So I, I would, how does council feel about, would you be willing to give up some of your time to, to meet, make it a notice meeting?
I think either a notice meeting, or we can tack it on to a-
Council workshop?
Well, you know, so I think I just canceled the October workshop due to lack of interest.
You want to do a, you want to do a workshop prior to a council meeting?
That could be, yeah. Well, I'll work with Christine, see what the-
First and second week in November.
See what the twenty-nine people can do, or, or maybe we, we jump into the tail end of a, they're coming here for the ending ceremony.
Right. Our last day at Port Orange University is November twelfth. I believe that's a Monday. The next day is a council meeting, but that's their opportunity to get their certificates.
Maybe we can have them come in early and have a-
Do a workshop prior to the meeting and then recognize them.
Yeah, one hour.
Start at five-thirty or something, and-
Okay.
Sure.
We can work on that for sure. I'm very excited.
Leave the two of you.
And not that I was excluding you, but, you know, I would love that. Love the opportunity for the council to meet all of you and all.
Let's do that at that last meeting, if it's okay with council. We'll just-
Yeah, we'll work on that.
That'd be great, because I'd learn a lot from them.
They can make it if you can.
And they're, they're a great, they love to ask questions, and they've been enthusiastic, and they've been very, very happy that we have something. And a lot of them are new to Port Orange, which is great, because the goal is to, for them to take the information that they learn every week and pass it on to their neighbors and their friends and so forth, and really show how City of Port Orange is run. So, very exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you. You are the face of the city. Please tell people what your job title is.
Sure. Public Information Officer, Christine Martindale.
So if you see her on television, you see her in the newspaper, it's because she is the public face of our city. Couldn't think of a better one.
Doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
And speaking of public engagement, the chamber is also in the middle of doing chamber leadership, and a number of those people are here this evening observing. I'd like you all to come up.
I think we lost most of them in the last break.
Yeah, well, those of you that are left, come on up. See, you let them bail. That's, that's, and I had a short agenda, too.
Short agenda is long meeting.
Annie, tell us about your charges. These people are civically engaged.
We only have three, three left here. We have sixteen. I'm Anne Penteliano. I live at fifty-eight Spinnaker Circle in South Daytona, which, right on board or Port Orange.
That's okay. That's okay. We still love you. It's next to my subdivision, so it's all good.
That's across from him. But this is Leadership Seventeen. They're doing a great job this year. We have Dr. James Young. He is a local chiropractor and one of the best, for me, anyway. We have Erica Johnson, and she is a lawyer with Coben Hall. And we have Catherine McMillan, who is the owner of Division Video Works.
Okay, very nice.
So how are we doing? Do we get a passing grade tonight?
We're doing a great job.
Sure? Okay.
All the rest of the class was, they were very impressed by us, too, with what goes on here, so there'll be lots of chatter tomorrow, believe me.
Because there you go. Once they find out that they missed this little segment.
That's right.
We certainly appreciate you, with your, Annie, with your help every year with this, but all of the civic engagement that this leads to. all of the civic engagement that this leads to, I'm hoping that you guys tackle another project like groups in the past have, but I appreciate you all being here. Questions?
We have, we have three, three or four staff members in this group, right?
I think you have...
Four. Alyssa, Teresa, yep, Josh, and a player to be named.
Most excellent.
All right.
Most excellent. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Item sixteen, Citizen Advisory Committee for TPO, Mr. Bobby Ball, speaking of civic engagement.
Hey, look who's here. Where have you been, man?
We haven't seen you in...
Been on tour for some reason?
It's been so long, you lost all this hair.
I only missed one month last month.
Yeah, really.
Bobby Ball, the CAC for the TPO. We had our monthly meeting this afternoon, and I just thought I'd mention one quick item since it was pertinent to tonight's discussion, and I'll just focus on that. We had the five-year tip update, which included two items for, that would be applicable to Port Orange and to the Main Street you guys were talking about earlier. It was also brought up then on the workshop for DOT's work program right afterwards as a presentation item. So the two items are the, for an integrated adaptive signal control project, which extends from, along Dunlott, from Summer Trees all the way to US One. So hopefully, we'll get the timings better. If you drive on ISB, you'll see and feel what that feels like. You can go pretty far distance if you go the speed limit from almost one end to the other. And then the other item would be a PDD study for the I-95 Pioneer Trail Interchange, which would then help traffic on Williamson. So with that, I don't take any questions or anything.
Any questions?
I will tell you, Bobby, Dunlott does feel better lately. Obviously, there's still room for improvement, so whatever they're doing.
You know, if you really compare it to Orlando, Jacksonville, all the places...
Well, of course, yeah. You want to feel better about Dunlott, you need to go to Orlando.
Port Orange is a great place to be.
Even compared to Ormond, you know, you drive up and down Granada.
You know, I actually got a taste of that the other day, and you're right. I was like, this is nuts.
God bless them, they've got challenges.
And for a long way. I kind of feel like our congestion typically is, you know, right there in that Clyde Morris just to the west of, you know, not so much there, man. That thing's from ninety-five to the bridge crazy, so, yeah. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thanks for the good news.
Bobby, I've been gone so long, I'm beginning to forget the language.
Forget the acronyms?
Oh, yeah.
Item seventeen, it's first reading of ordinance number 2017-30, the rezoning of thirty-five eighteen Nova Road. An ordinance of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, rezoning plus or minus one acre located at thirty-five eighteen Nova Road from moderate-density multifamily residential R-3M to community commercial. Authorized revision of the official zoning atlas and providing for an effective date. Move to approve ordinance number 2017-30. We have a motion, we have a second? It's been a while.
Penelope Curious, planner. So the subject property owner was in the process of getting ready to sell the property, and in doing that type of work and everything, came across the fact that the property is actually zoned multifamily residential, even though it has been a retail furniture store since the seventies.
How about that?
So...
This is little field.
Yes. So we did some research, and we found out that the future land use has actually had a commercial future land use on the property since at least nineteen eighty-five, and went back and looked at some of the old zoning maps, and it appears to have inadvertently been rezoned to R-3M sometime in the nineteen eighties, when they were doing updates to the zoning atlas. So I think this was just an error that occurred back in the eighties and just wasn't on anyone's radar, so we've brought forward this administrative rezoning to correct that and recognize a longstanding property that's been commercial.
Very reasonable. Comments, council?
What were you thinking, Bob?
I remember, I think I had a headache that day.
It's kind of in residential. They actually, for the longest time, had a cardboard cutout, full life-size of a person that they used to sit right inside the glass. I can remember being on patrol one night and pulling in there to turn around and looking, and I mean, you're like, oh, my God, there's somebody standing right there at three o'clock in the morning, so...
And there's beds.
Kind of a bullet hole set in for you.
Yeah, man.
They have the flashing light, too, the strobe light.
I remember the strobe light.
I remember it well. Council, any other comments? Would anyone else care to speak to this? Call the roll.
Councilman Tremont.
Yes.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, five-oh. I guess we can't blame that on Wayne Clark, since he slid out the back door, because it's predated even him. Item eighteen, ratification of emergency generator rental with Ring Power Corporation and Electrical Services with Economy Electric. Who's speaking to this, Jake?
I will go ahead. Mayor, council, this was just a ratification of a call I made a couple weeks ago for emergency generator, powers of water reclamation facility. Without that backup, if we lost power, we would have lost some of our processing capability. I decided that we couldn't live without that, so I went ahead with the emergency purchase, and it's in front of you tonight for ratification.
And this is something that isn't even really a judgment call. Technically, we're not allowed to take that risk. We can't operate by law without that emergency generator. We're shut down without it. Council comments? May I have a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Anybody else like to speak to this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Go away, I mean, any opposed? You've got that one. Financial report, August of 2017. Not happen?
No, I'm having difficulty locating the presentation. Council does have it in Board Sync, so we can do that, but it's unfortunately not for the benefit of the viewing public, so...
Well, it is online and it is posted.
Okay, so I'll present my apologies for that. You've received the financial statement for the period ended August thirty-first, 2017. I'm Tracy, the finance director.
You want to pull that microphone up so everybody can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you. So as we look at the general fund, you will see that revenues are at sixty-seven percent of the budget, although ninety-two percent of the year has passed. That's primarily a result of the hurricane that is skewing our entire picture this year.
Which one?
Well, it's actually, in this case, it's Matthew.
Okay.
Because we have not brought you a budget resolution yet for Irma, the vast majority of which is going to be in fiscal eighteen. So in any case, you'll see that the actual revenue is a million eight, more than it was at this time last year. About fifty-two percent of that, or nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand, is related to ad valorem tax increases. The balance of, is eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven, and when you keep in mind that the land that we sold was nine-hundred-and-ninety-six, that means the balance of the items has actually gone down compared with last year. Not a lot. Some go up, some go down, but when we do the revenue estimates as we go into the new fiscal year, of course, we always want to be optimistic, but in reality, this year, we were slightly, were slightly less than we anticipated. If we look at the expenditure side, we have eighty-two percent of the budget having been expended, and if you remove the capital purchases, the fleet purchases, and the hurricane from that, our actual expenditures are six-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars less than it was at this time last year. When you go down to the bottom line, of course, it's very difficult, because the hurricane is skewing everything. At this point, we're looking at a loss of six-point-seven million. We're looking into revenue recognition based upon the fact that FEMA has not even obligated our projects that are there, so I'll be working with the auditors on the appropriate recognition of that.
Be able to show it as an accounts receivable in the meantime?
You can book a receivable for it, but if you don't anticipate that it's going to come in in a timely fashion, the offset needs to be deferred inflow, not a revenue line. That, of course, makes your, your financial statements look very bad. Any skilled reader of the financial statements, recognizing that there's hurricanes, which are primarily your bond rating agencies and such, are going to see that that actually will be revenue that comes in, cash that comes in, but the problem is the timeframe. I certainly would have expected to have something by now, and frankly, no one in Volusia County has seen anything, so it's going to be an interesting working on that.
We had a change, radical change in non-liquid assets to liquid assets with the sale of land on top of a hurricane, so when the auditors come for this one this year, they will earn their money, wish them.
Yes.
I know you'll have them ready.
Thank you. If we look at the next fund, which is 109 Special Revenue Fund, we can see there that our revenues are actually at a hundred-and-seven percent of the budget. They're eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars more than at this time last year, so it's been a very active time in the, in the building fund. Our expenditures there are sixty-seven percent of the budget, or a million-one-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars more than last year, and at this time, revenue exceeds expenditures by six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand seven sixty-seven. Primarily, the reason that we're less on the expenditures is that we are working on a project that is still in the development stage, so that's what's causing that. Otherwise, that's why the increase actually compared to last year, but a decrease compared to budget.
So Tim Dorman doesn't get to take credit for anything that he shouldn't be taking credit for just yet, though?
If we, if we look here at, the next page is the Water Sewer Fund. This has revenue of eighty-two percent of the budget. It's two-point-six percent more than at this time last year, or five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. And I've stapled this, so I can't read what I've written. Our expenditures are seventy-five percent of the budget, and however, if you look at the operating side, that's actually at seventy-nine percent. So I draw your attention to the operating expenses, where you see the eleven-thousand-seven nine thirty-three zero four zero of expenditures. So that is at seventy-nine percent, but if you total up all of the expenditures, you get to twenty-one, one eighty-one, four thirty-four. The primary difference being the projects. So the actual operation of the fund is proceeding as expected. The projects have been a little bit slower this year compared to at the same time last year. At this point, so all that translates into this point being revenue exceeding expenditures of two-million-thirty-five thousand one hundred and twelve versus a million-three-oh-two-eight-eighty-nine last year, but I didn't want that difference to be misinterpreted as necessarily profit-making as opposed to projects. In the next fund, the Solid Waste Fund, four-ten, we have revenue of eighty-eight percent of the budget, six-million-one-thirty-one oh seventy-four. That's the combination of the operating and not operating, which is ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-eight more than at this time last year, or a percent and a half. Our expenses are also at eighty-eight percent of the budget, however, they are two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars more, two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars more than at this time last year, so the increase of three-point-nine percent. So we have basically revenues increasing at a percent and a half, expenditures at three-point-nine. No need to worry at this point about rates, because this fund has a substantial fund balance, but just recognize in the future that we are eroding that position over time. In the Stormwater Fund, revenues are at sixty percent, four-million-three-fifty-two-five-seventeen. However, again, the operating revenue is at ninety-eight percent. That's the top number you see there, three-million-eight-eighty-seven-six-forty-seven. The difference in this is really the grant revenue piece. So the operations itself is running as expected. The grant revenue is less than expected. We look at our expenditures, we have three-million-eight-eighty-eight ninety-nine five forty-eight. However, the operating expenditures are at that million-four-fifty-seven, so the operating expenditures are up from last year. The grants and the projects are lagging a bit. That translates into revenue exceeding expenses by four-fifty-two-nine-sixty-nine versus two-sixty-five, almost two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars last year, and the operating income is just up by only fifty thousand dollars. So it's going along as expected, again, a bit of a lag more on the project side of the house.
Right.
You also have your consolidated golf course funds for the period ended August thirty-first. I'll draw your attention to the income statement side of it. I have broken out the restaurant rent and the restaurant operations, both in the revenue and the expenditure side, however, it didn't happen in August, so those numbers will start to drop in when I get the September figure. At the end of August, we had a positive net position of fifty-one thousand seven hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, slightly eroding over the summer as anticipated, as you can watch on the, on the picture of the next page, where you tend to see the activity dip down at this time of year. Subsequent to this being sent out on Board Sync, we did receive a statement of activities for the Y, which I'll hand out to you in paper copy.
Quick question.
Yes?
Just something you can answer, but it didn't catch my eye. If you look at the golf court, the golf, there was a rather severe, it was probably due to the hur, well, the hurricane came a little later, the drop-off in rounds this year, towards the end of the year, toward the end of the, quite a drop-off, probably due to weather.
I was going to say, we had a much wetter summer even before we got here with another hurricane.
We, I also might remind council that we had the interruption in the restaurant service, which I recall that Kemper was reporting had a negative impact on golfing.
Definitely. It is amazing the number of people you don't realize count on being able to have a beverage on the golf course until you can't provide it, and then you hear from them. What do you ever?
I need my hot dog at the turn.
Any questions for Ms. Ream? You're being done. Thank you very much.
Well done, as always.
That brings us to city attorney comments.
I have one item this evening, council. Prior to Hurricane Irma, the city contracted with Ashbrit to handle our debris removal resulting from the storm. As you recall, there was a delay in Ashbrit coming forward. In that interim period, the city secured the debris management site and prepared it for the needs of the debris management. Shortly thereafter, Ashbrit was able to secure the appropriate equipment and get back to work or get to work on the project. We have considered turning over that debris management site. I would ask your authorization tonight to enable...
To the county? Or to, to Ashbrit?
To Ashbrit.
Okay.
From the city's...
Want to be clear.
...control to Ashbrit's management as they move forward with the rest of their contract. I would ask you tonight to authorize the city manager to make that turnover and to execute this task authorization and amendment. This is the amendment number two, to the task authorization number two for Ashbrit's contract.
Questions on that, council?
Not so much for that, but just in regards to Ashbrit, you know, at the initial, at the initial backing out, breaching of contract, I was extremely livid and wanted, wanted badly to pursue legal action. My question is now, have they, have they regained their favor with us?
I think we've kind of got to wait for an after-action, because I would hesitate to pass judgment on their actions while they're still working on behalf of our citizens. But I do think that that's very, very...
We did not enter into an agreement with them without having a very candid discussion about their lack of showing up to the game on day one, and, and, or, their feet are being held to the fire throughout the state right now, and I would say that they're, they're, they're making up for lost time, and they're doing the same here in Port Orange. This is, what Margaret brings to you, I would have signed under executive order, but I've let my executive order run out. We're here now, and nothing is an emergency anymore, so...
And that's probably a discussion provided on clear.
But they're, they're, they're doing fine. We want to turn over the debris management, so I can get some more of my people back out in the field doing what you all want them to do instead of that.
We have a motion for approval? Second. We have a second. Motion from the vice mayor, second from councilman Bastian. Any other comments?
Jake, how did, I know we had an emergency contract with Daytona Tree Service or something, and did they fall under Ashbrit, or was that a separate deal for them, or what?
That was, that was one of the arrangements. We asked Ashbrit to fold them into the, fold them into the Port Orange. Because they were here for us.
Yeah.
We didn't want to send them out to pasture, so we told Ashbrit to make sure that the CSE is in the mix with Port Orange, since he came to the, he came to the.
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking, I mean, and maybe in the future, we could have him, you know, Ashbrit does this again, we could get somebody here to.
I think the key to keeping Ashbrit getting the job done was the bond. So we will definitely be securing bonds as needed for this type of response. And mayor, before we vote, please make sure the public has an opportunity.
Anybody else like to speak to this? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Tremont.
Yes.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner.
No.
Vice Mayor Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Anything else, Margaret?
No, that's it, thank you.
See, manager comments. So you got a couple items.
I do. As indicated, last council, well, says that right there, as indicated last council meeting, I asked that you think about unfreezing additional personnel. The police department CSE, which would be as soon as Chief Grimaldi can get that person hired, the police officer, it's not due till April 18, but I'd like you to consider that this evening. The community development admin assistant for code, which will result in a little shuffle and a decrease in the overall budget expenditure for the general fund and all the public utilities positions that are also not affected or affecting the general fund. There are no public works positions that are, that were asked for this year. So those, those obviously don't exist, so we won't be asking for them. I will note that, that in this whole budget versus execution game that we consistently play in an effort to try to find that two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in budget, we're saving probably, not saving, we're not spending approximately twenty-three thousand dollars a month with the hires we're not hiring for October. And I don't expect to get any October hires done here in the next fifteen days. So the movement, the Branford, Mike Silvy departure, the hole that Ronnie Buttram made when he fleeted up to interim, all those things are netting you about twenty-three thousand dollars a month right now.
It's about ten percent of it.
So.
Counsel comments, questions? We have a motion for approval?
So moved, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion. Councilman Tremont, second, and councilman Bastian. Any other comments? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Tremont.
Yes.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, five oh. What else you got, Jake?
Yes, sir. Due to the past issues that Port Orange had a couple of years ago with sole source purchasing and purchasing for meters and telemetry, I bring this to your attention, that I'm going to award a sole source purchase for the Public Utilities Department for Sun State Meter and Supply as a sole source provider for Neptune meters and, and for Core and Main, which used to be HD Supply, for the telemetry or the dual-port transmitters. This, basically, we're buying our last, I think this is our last batch of meters. So we have about forty-five hundred to go. They're the big-ticket items, the hard ones. They're not the, you know, go out and replace that one-for-one swaps. There's, there's problems with each one of them that take a little bit. But that's where we are right now in the meter replacement. And I just bring it to your attention in the, to be as transparent as possible with the meters. No vote required, I'm gonna, I'm gonna approve it.
Any objections? No objections? Good. Quick question on that.
Yes, sir.
Public Utilities, pretty happy with the use of Neptune so far?
We have, we, yeah, we like the, we like the, the meters, and we haven't had any, any abnormal problems. We are.
Well, I don't know about you, Bob, but I love your net.
Makes my heart jump.
So, so I will, I will put in a shameless plug for Aquahawk, though. We spend, we spend money on that, and, and it will, it will prevent our citizen. We spent money to ensure citizens have a way to find out whether their home and the water on their side of the meter is leaking. So we've provided them a tool so they don't have to come up here and ask for forgiveness on two thousand dollar water bills. So my shameless plug, get on Aquahawk and don't, don't have to do the embarrassing shuffle to the podium to ask for a waiver of fees that, as you well know, I don't think we should waive.
Could we maybe send a reminder about that Aquahawk in a water bill?
All the time.
Could we, okay.
It's, it's almost overkill, there's something to be said, but, but believe me.
It's terrific.
I got my wife pushing it at Publix, so we do everything.
I'm on it, I utilize it.
Is she on the Aquahawk commission program?
It is amazing with that system. You can tweak it to how you get your alerts. And I've had to tweak it because the way I was, had it set up originally, every time my teenage boy took a shower, I was getting an alert. But. That's, I think that's the next phase of Aquahawk.
You can turn the hot water off, right?
There you go. Now you've got something, Mayor.
Now you know why I have solar hot water.
He's got to take a camping shower, you only got six gallons in an RV, so you got to take a quick shower.
Mayor, just a, just a quick comment. I've already mentioned it to Jake, but I believe in, in public recognition and praise. I wanted to commend Jake on his proactive movement to suspend our online payment. Oremans in a mess right now with a lot of their, their billing. And I just want to say, well done, Jake. And we've got some other factors, I believe, that was indicated that late payments and stuff will be forgiven if they're caught up in that, in that bill, in that bill mess, correct?
If, I want to be clear, if, if they are, if they are on auto bill pay and their auto bill pay does not go through, and they get a late charge because they thought their auto bill pay was paying the bill, then, then we will waive that late fee because it was basically our fault, we shut down the system. However, we know who was on auto bill pay the day before we shut it down. So if we sign up for auto bill pay today, no, we are not going to waive that.
Jake, in the. We haven't had any, any problems with any of our, any of Port Orange residents, correct? None of our customers are breached?
None that we can definitely attribute to this. We have one staff person that had a fraudulent credit card, but we can't, we can't attribute it to this, so.
Well, nevertheless, good job.
On the billing part of that, now, I'm on that auto pay and I get a bill that says, "Bank draft, do not pay." Will my next water bill say, "Pay this bill," or is it going to say, "Bank draft"?
No, it'll say, as far as I understand, it'll say, "Bank draft, do not pay." Your, your bank will try to pay it. You might get something back from the bank saying, "This, this didn't work."
Okay.
You might not. We're not sure yet, we're still trying to research how that's going to play out. And then if that happens, you're going to get two months of bills and a late fee the next time, unless we can undo the late fee part, which we're looking at right now as well.
And then the late fee will be reversed.
And then, and then, and then we'll work it. Now, I'm, I'm, if your auto, give me a day or two, because we might be able to turn it back on. I'm afraid that people are going to freak out and come in and pay their bill, and then it's going to auto bill pay, which is not the end of the world, unless it's three hundred bucks and all you have is three hundred bucks and you, you get charged twice, then, then you've got three hundred dollars credit, but you don't have any money in your pocket to buy macaroni and cheese, so, so we're.
Get it right.
We're cautious about that, right?
Get it right. What else you got, Jake?
That's enough.
I couldn't agree more.
I'd like to back up just to one item. There is a copy of a conservation easement in the agenda that's for your information. We talked about that several weeks ago, and I just wanted to be sure you had it, so if you have any questions, let me know.
I saw it, thank you. Which brings us to committee reports, Art House.
Art House, we had a very successful fundraiser with the, what do they call it, concrete art? The art on the sidewalks during family days. By the way, they, you ever get a chance, stop by and see it. Next year, come see it, if you haven't seen it.
It's still out there, you can still go see it now.
Yeah, it's impressive, the quality they do. I never realized that, as a canvas, they can overlay different chalks over each other and give it a little more depth to feeling. I'm learning a lot since you put me on that board.
Yeah, I still had to act as judge, though, I haven't, I might have to delegate that to you next year, too. Did not like doing that.
But they're doing well.
Good choices.
Going on, we have a meeting Friday, no, Thursday.
Port Orange, South Daytona, Chamber of Commerce, this, I'm sorry, next week, instead of the third Thursday, as we normally do, the fourth Thursday is the chamber after hours. It's going to be held at the chamber. It's being sponsored by Foundation Thirty-Seven. Port Orange Roundtable, I'm sorry, Roundtable of Elected Officials. We had not met for four months, partly because of summer, partly because of storms. So it was a long one on Monday. Just to recap, I should say Monday, Monday of last week, one of the discussions, we had George Reckenwald from the county and talk about somebody in the county that knows his stuff to talk about storm and recap. One of the things, big takeaways, is he felt like the intergovernmental, intergovernment communications between cities and county during the storm was excellent. I told him that we definitely concur and we appreciate that. Certainly other discussions about debris pickup, debris contractor issues, and FEMA reimbursement were some of the things he discussed. And then, of course, since we hadn't met in quite a while, talking about the infrastructure sales tax. The company that was hired by the CEO Alliance to do the survey, Clear Blue Research, did not have their full presentation, but it was shared with us that there was support for a half-cent sales tax for infrastructure, but not a full cent. And of course, this is very preliminary, we'll hear more about that. And quite frankly, I think that that list at a full set needed to be tightened up a little bit anyway. So that is preliminary, as we get more next time we meet, I'll share that with you guys. Any questions about that? If not, thank you, everybody, have a good evening. We're out.